Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It is Monday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P. M. And tonight we're having a series of committee meetings, the first of which is Finance and Personnel. And since the first item for this Finance and Personnel Committee meeting is a presentation from Boone Troyer, the Executive Director of the Athens Convention and Visitors Bureau, we'll have council members stay up here for that presentation for ease of being able to to discuss with him and and ask any questions. So, Councilmember Crowe.
President Nysley, Mr. Troyer would like to join us. Thanks for being here tonight.
So I have an overview of the Visit Athens County office for the year two thousand twenty-three to date. First, thank you, Council, for having me. I always enjoy these conversations, especially when it's a year that we are doing so well. If it was the opposite conversation, I wouldn't enjoy it as much. So here we are. I'm going to first start with a little bit of financial information. I'm going to discuss all these things, and I would encourage everyone just to keep our time short. If there are things that we need to dive deeper into, if you have extenuating circumstances where you want to ask really deep diving questions or get into financials, please feel free to come to the office anytime. Call me, call me on my cellphone. All of you know this already. I very much enjoy talking, especially when it's something I'm passionate about, so feel free to call me. So some financial information here. I'm going to dive a little bit into the weeds and set the foundation for where we are in two thousand twenty-three. So really, starting in two thousand twenty-one, we began our rebuilding phase with Visit Athens County. As a reminder, we unfortunately had to cut several of our contracts. We cut staff. We had to really work hard to support our board and build, back up our marketing presence and institute new contracts and strategies to move our office to where we are now. In comparison to our city and county income for two thousand twenty-one, we produced a twenty-three percent growth in two thousand twenty-two. Due to this, our new view on financial operations in late two thousand twenty-two, with the support of our board, for the first time, our office began planning our two thousand twenty-three budget with actual funds, not guestimates. That's a big deal. We are not operating on projected income. We are currently running on actual income for our office. This has been an important part of my focus as Executive Director. I personally feel this allows us to better be prepared for new ideas, investments, allows a higher level of support when it comes to our financial obligations for the future of our office. Now to the specific numbers. In two thousand twenty-two, our income for Visit Athens County was seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. That is the highest income for our office in the history of the organization. In two thousand twenty-three, we currently, right now, are at three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, nine hundred and, or sorry, three hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. We're projected to end around eight hundred thousand dollars for the year. Again, highest income in the history of the organization. In quarter two of two thousand twenty-one, Visit Athens County saw its first record-setting income with the county and city lodging tax at one hundred and ninety-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. In quarter two of two thousand twenty-two, we received two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Now, in quarter two of two thousand twenty-three, we are at two hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and one dollars. That is a significant growth in a very small amount of time. To date, we've seen record highs for each quarter continuously, and we project that that will continue through the remainder of the year. Now, I tell you all of this, I know that we have the highest income coming in, not so that people can ask for money and have more ideas for us because we have ideas of where we want that money to go. So for next year, we're really excited to again be operating off of the biggest income that we've had coming in. Our tiny four-person team does a whole lot of work. We are hoping to hire a new person for next year. We're really excited about that. We need it if we want to continue to grow. We also purchased a Ram ProMaster van this year with the support of our board, and we're really excited to turn that into a mobile visitor center. I got goosebumps, and I'm so excited to make that happen. So we're in contract right now, working with a company out of Grove City to help make a full mobile visitor center for our office. A question that we receive a lot, and I've actually received this question directly from a lot of you, with the income that we have and we see this continuous growth and we're setting records each year, now we can attribute that to a lot of things, one of which is, is there's a lot more unique lodging options in our community. We've seen unique lodging continue to grow. More people are starting Airbnbs, VRBOs, and I would like to say that we are a part of that conversation. Our office has been highly involved in state-level conversations about unique lodging. I represent the Ohio Convention and Visitors Bureau Association as an Executive Board member, and we are currently working with the State of Ohio on what recommendations and a House bill might look like for that, for the State of Ohio. The other attribute that you can give is that there are higher costs for overnight stays. For our hotels and our unique lodging, it costs more to stay overnight now, so that's a higher income. Now, you can say those two things are happening, and I'm really glad that they are because we see a growth in lodging tax income. However, I just shared the numbers with you, and to see that growth, of course, my answer to you is, is because of what our office is doing. That's why it's so significant. Not only is it those two things, but our office is in marketing, promoting, we're working late nights, we're putting in the effort to make sure that people are coming here and spending their money, not only in overnight stays, but eating at restaurants, going to art pieces, going to shows, watching music, buying coffee, getting pizza, and of course, staying in the back. The biggest thing that I want to say thank you and make sure that I mention is that my office, I mentioned our tiny four-person team, we work a lot of our events around our community over the last three years. It's been an intent to be at those events. If any of you know Joel Prince, he is at almost every event that you would ever attend, taking photographs so that we can use those in our print and marketing materials. That means he's working late nights and weekends and putting in extra hours, and they do so many other things, slinging drinks, cutting brush, running four-wheelers, moving trees, putting up fences for all of these events, and that's beyond what our scope of work is for our office. My office works very, very hard. They're creative. They're driven to bring visitors to the state and specifically to our part of the state, and this is why our office has been so successful. There's a few things that I would like to share with all of you. These are the big things, and again, I could talk for days about all the things that we've done just within two thousand twenty-three, but here's some of the big ones. June and July, the two months, had motorcycle groups in town every single day of those two months. There wasn't a day without a motorcycle group in town. Our events have grown and continue to grow all throughout the year. We have seen new ones along with smaller communities offering niche-focused events, and our office hosted the Second Annual Athena Ride for Women. This was a four-day event that brought in a hundred and twenty riders to town. Our office selected My Sister's Place as an organization to, that supports victim survivors of domestic violence, and through that event and our office, we raised five thousand five dollars for My Sister's Place. We also increased our annual grant program and provided twenty thousand dollars of grants to new and existing events in our county. Our office purchased the Ram ProMaster van, and as I mentioned with all of these events, the idea is, is that hopefully in late two thousand twenty-four, early two thousand twenty-five, that visitor's van will actually be at all of those events as well. And last, I will share with you tonight, I want to show a five-minute video of Roadrunner Magazine's video of Ohio's Windy Nine. This is a campaign program we work with Roadrunner Magazine. It's the top motorcycling magazine in the United States. This video will be shown literally all over the world. We've already had people from Europe contacting us about getting Windy Nine information to come ride. And before we show the video, just very briefly, again, if anyone wants to come to the office and see these, I won't make everyone go through these, but we signed a twenty thousand dollar contract with professional sports organizations. To provide perspective for that, for me to buy a full-page ad in the Hocking Hills Visitors Guide, it's thirty-five hundred dollars. For me to buy a full-page ad in these professional sports publications, it was only four thousand dollars. It was a huge back and forth. We worked very, very hard to make that happen, and again, with the support of the board, we were able to sign a twenty thousand dollar contract. That includes the Cleveland Guardians, and I should mention, these are yearbooks and game day programs, so just think pure numbers, how many people are going to see the ad if they flip through the magazine? Cleveland Guardians, Bengals, Annual Yearbook Collector's Edition, Game Day Program, the Cleveland Cavaliers, Chicago Bulls, Cleveland Browns, Pittsburgh Pirates, Pittsburgh Steelers, and the list can go on. I have a full bag of stuff back there that I didn't get everything out of. Montap Magazine, local breweries, wineries, Compton, Ohio did a full spread, show both sides here. We have coverage of Bailey's Trail System in a two-page editorial in there. And then Mayor Patterson was kind enough to help us with Ohio Magazine last year. This happened in December, so I didn't report this last year, but Athens was voted Athens, Ohio, best hometown in Ohio. So we got some coverage in the magazine, and I'm wearing the little pin that they gave us as well, so that was some really cool recognition. And then, without further ado, we'll play the video here, and then I can take some questions. There's some sound. It's not as good as I thought it sounded.
We're gonna go ride Ohio's Windy Nine. There's nine routes over seven hundred miles in three days. Wait, can we do that in three days?
Ohio's Windy Nine routes begin and end in Athens, Ohio, making it the home base for our riding adventure. After our days of leaning into the curves, we plan to explore the region's largest collection of lodging, dining, shopping, and nightlife in Athens, and enjoy the local food, craft beer, wineries, live entertainment, art exhibits, shops, and more. Athens, Ohio is a little off-peak and a whole lot of fun, and the Windy Nine experience wouldn't be the same anywhere else.
I'm Josh Manning, a professional photographer from the Raleigh, North Carolina area, and I am seeking adventure on an Indian pursuit.
And I'm Kendall Williams, owner of Triple T Suspension. I'm a professional tuner out of Durham, North Carolina, and I'm on Here We Go with Suzuki TSXS one thousand GT Plus. And we're meeting up with our friend Marissa from Nashville, and what is she doing?
I'm Marissa with Roadrunner Motorcycle Touring and Travel Magazine, and I'll be riding the Triumph Tiger Explorer.
So how do you guys like the Zaleski zipper? Am I saying it correctly?
Zaleski zipper?
It's a Zaleski zipper.
And sippy.
It was sippy. Yeah, it was sippy. It really was. It was rolling.
Lots of open highway. There was a little section of road where it was just this up and down, up and down, up and down. It felt like we were on a roller coaster. So much fun.
We did it actually during the later part of the day. The golden hour. Yeah, the golden hour. It was, it was perfect seeing that red sun. It's a great route to take if you are starting after dinner, even if it's a six o'clock, seven o'clock departure, you can still get it in and get it done and get back to your hotel by dark, by four dark. Yeah, we think we ate at the Soul.
What do you call friends who eat together?
What?
Takes butts. You're a foodie and you like to ride a motorcycle. Southeast Ohio, Athens, the Windy Nine, this whole region is full of great places to eat. You find great places like the one right behind us, the Triple Ninety Diner. The second day, we rode the Rim of the World. We got a little bit later start in the morning. It was about eighty-five miles round trip. Thirty-two of those miles are along Highway seventy-eight, which is a good.
So to respect our time here, I'll go ahead and pause that. So you can see the connection with Roadrunner Magazine is big for us. This is again a video that will literally go all over the world. Something that's really important to us is the fact that Windy Nine is not only a city-focused and county-focused campaign, it goes outside of our county, and so we're also supporting other businesses just in southeast Ohio. It's a very unique program. There are not a lot of other CVBs in the State of Ohio that do that. They're often focused on these brick walls that are around their community, and they stay there. But what we're seeing is, is by supporting these other businesses, those businesses are then supporting us. So if folks come in on motorcycles in McConnelsville, and they go into a restaurant like the Blue Bell Diner, Blue Bell says, hey, are you here for Ohio's Windy Nine? You got to go down to Athens and check it out for the nightlife, or something of like that, of that kind. So it's a, it's a really good campaign. It's actually focused, focusing us on some more creative ideas about how we take other niche programs and use that same sort of outline where we're utilizing the county and our community in southeast Ohio to kind of pull back to our area. And then lastly, I share a lot about Ohio's Windy Nine because it's an extremely productive campaign for us. We do invest time and money into it, which has, has clearly paid off. I mentioned June and July motorcycle groups. However, just because I'm sharing that in the short amount of time that I have does not mean that we're not doing the other things. I want to make that very clear. This is something that's just working very well for us. So I'll end my, my presentation there and take any questions.
Yes.
I guess it's my committee, I guess. Just a comment, that former Chair Sean Kaiser did an excellent job, and current Chair Brandon Thompson has taken on his mantle and is really doing well on the board, so thanks for all the work that you and the board does together.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, Member Spielmanus.
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming and thank you for your success. It sounds like you're doing really well, and we really appreciate your hard work. My only question at this point is, how do you decide which potential tourists to target? I mean, you've, you've talked about, you know, the motorcyclists and whatnot. How do you decide what other kinds of tourists you're trying to attract?
So really, the answer is all-inclusive. There isn't a niche focus that we won't reach out to. I recall a question actually last year when I did this about fishing and hunting from Councilmember Reisner, and that's a group that we also reach out to, arts and culture, history, the list goes on. It's literally every group. What we do is this trial and error process where we say, okay, we have a niche campaign that we want to run. What does this get us? And like I mentioned, the reason that Windy Nine is so front and center right now is because it's been so successful. We have a lot of outdoor recreation stuff right now, as we all know, happening with, actually gravel riding right now is really, really growing. I spent the last month getting a lot of phone calls about gravel. I actually took one this morning about that. So we're kind of focused on the biking community, not only with trail riding, but gravel and road riding as well. If you were unaware, we hosted Pelotonia Gravel Challenge for the first time this year, and that was great. So the answer is, it's, it's all-inclusive. The particulars of how we pick those, again, it's, it's a trial and error process and one, marketing campaigns are actually working or not. We utilize groups around the state, the CVB councils, to see kind of what is happening in the area. And then for us currently, right now, southeast Ohio is seeing an enormous asset growth in all sorts of niche areas. And so the biggest thing for us is really for me to attend those meetings and be a part of those councils so that I can hear what the growth is, what's coming and what's being invested in, so that we can be there before the train gets there, if that makes any sense.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Currently, you're, you're housed in a building that the city owns and maintains, has some pluses and has some minuses. What are your short-term and long-term plans for either continuing to occupy that building or going somewhere else?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Schlink. You, you asked me this exact question last year as well when I presented. The answer to that is, is we're continuing to look for new places. In full transparency, it's, it's to the bottom of the list with all the things that I've mentioned. That's kind of our day-to-day and our main focus. Eventually, the goal would be to be in a new location. We are still having conversations about the Alco Building, potentially putting a small center in there, working with United Senior Centers and Parks and Rec, and then also having a mobile visitor center will be a big piece of that puzzle for us, of being able to get out into the community. And we've been very open about our staff again. There's only four of us, and the amount of work that we do that is outside of normal business hours, we're very good at working at home or at a new location or at an event, during an event, things like that. We do a lot of travel as well. So like, the long-term plan is, yes, we would love to move into a new location. I've met with business owners and property owners, just waiting for the right time and and the right location for us to be on.
The impetus for the question this year is that in the not-too-distant future, we're going to be talking about fiscal year twenty-four budget, and was just wondering if you foresee any requests that might affect our planning for that budget? Are we looking perhaps more out in two thousand twenty-five and beyond?
If we could make it happen in two thousand twenty-four, I would gladly welcome that. That would be fantastic. It really is about location and options right now. Again, with the support of the board, county commissioners and Councilmember Crowe being on our board, we've basically paid ourselves rent of what we think a new location would be for this year. I mentioned my financial and kind of analytics background and operating on a full budget, so when we go into budget cycle for two thousand twenty-four, we'll be operating on actual funds that we have in there. So I'll be able to say, yes, we can afford this, or no, we can't, by looking at what the money is in there and not having to have a projection. So the answer is, is as soon as possible, we're just waiting for the right time.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Boone Troyer? Thank you very much for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Moving on, so now we will go into our regular committee session here. So myself, Mr. Reisner, Mr. Ziff, and Ms. Spielmanus. First, next item on our agenda is to amend city code. This is to include language that is currently not in our city code, that is in the Ohio Revised Code about the deputy auditor position. And a request has been made by the Auditor's Office. In the Ohio Revised Code, Section seven thirty-three point one-nine, it does include, "The city auditor may, when authorized by ordinance, appoint a deputy who, in the absence or disability of such auditor, shall perform their duties." So this is the section that we are proposing be added to the City of Athens Code, specifically the deputy auditor, "In the absence or disability of the auditor, shall perform the duties of the auditor." Are there any questions about this inclusion into city code?
Yeah.
Yes, Member Reisner?
Auditor, we've had a deputy auditor for quite a while, haven't we?
Yes, because we have language in there about appointing a deputy auditor and appointing the tax administrator, but we didn't have the additional language that the ORC has where it says, if I'm not available for whatever reason, the deputy can go ahead and perform the auditor duties.
I always kind of thought that's what a deputy auditor would do anyway, so.
Well, it's in, in the Ohio Revised Code, and I would just like it to be more clear that she has that authority when I'm not available.
So, Member Reisner, what, what is in our code is three point oh three point oh seven, Deputy Auditor A, "There is established one position of deputy auditor. The deputy auditor shall assist the auditor in the performance of their duties." So the new paragraph is much more specific to performing the exact duties of the auditor in the auditor's absence or disability. Additional questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. We have a number of appropriations, fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-three cents to be appropriated to the general fund fire, the capital line, for a BWC grant. Are there any questions about this specific appropriation to the fire department? Next appropriation is twenty-five thousand dollars to the parking enforcement fund. This is the services line. This is for credit card fees. As we know, we have smart meters on our streets that accept credit cards, and of course, the credit card companies have fees, and we periodically have to cover these credit card fees, which we believe are being paid for by the, the user of the, of the, of the credit card, and we're still getting some clarification on that from the credit card companies. That's the way that the original agreement was established, and we've been advised to double-check on that, but this is a twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation for those credit card fees. Are there questions from the committee on this appropriation? Other members of council? Yes, Member McCary?
Thank you. Could you, do you know over how much time that twenty-five thousand parking?
Yes, that is from September to December, so it's a four-month period of time. Any other questions, Member McCary?
No, just a reaction that that's a lot of money, and I, I wonder if we are looking into options for reducing that amount? I don't know if that's about the vendor or another matter, if this is pretty consistent for every four months. I just hadn't noticed it.
I know that the, the Service Safety Director is not here tonight. Mayor, would you like to speak to that?
Absolutely. Originally, the, the contract was that there was a percentage that was added on by the user, and so it's sure they paid for an hour or two hours, whatever was allotted at the meter, and then there was an addition. at the meter, and then there was an additional service charge that was on top of that to 25 cents or 16 cents, whatever it was. Of late, though, we have, we believe that that has gone away and that the city, through parking enforcement for those meters, is now having to absorb that cost. We're doing some fact-finding with the vendor that we're using with IPS to see if somewhere along the line, that part of the agreement went away and what that language looks like, where they can dissolve that and the city ends up taking on that as opposed to the customer. So, more to come on that, but it's because the meters have been used at a, they're highly used. And so, we're now having to go and look at that line item and go, okay, well, we're now absorbing that service charge or that service fee. So, we're going to do some real serious fact-finding with the provider to see what has changed.
Thank you.
Yes, Member Swank?
Back to that amount of money. That was for how many months? Four months?
Correct.
So, 3%, that means we brought in $833,333 in pennies, nickels, and dimes, not anymore dimes, quarters, and whatever. And so, on an annualized basis, what is that, $2.5 million? Is auditor, is that what we normally bring in, $2.5 million? About how much do we bring in?
So, last year, our revenue for street meters was $470,000.
Say that number again, please.
$470,000.
So, to generate, for this $25,000 request at 3%, which is high because some credit cards are two and a half, some are 2.75, American Express is three, $833,000 in four months. Something doesn't jive here.
It's obviously not 3%. It looks to me more like a flat fee.
So, there's a contract somewhere, right? Can we get it to the law director to review?
I'm not, I don't sign contracts for the city. It's the service safety director's duty in the Ohio Revised Code. So, I don't have anything to do with the contract.
Okay.
And I can reassure you, Member Swank, that when this issue was brought to our attention, the service safety director is looking specifically at that contract, and the treasurer is looking specifically at the credit card bills and what is happening with that fee. Member Reisner?
I just want to make one thing clear. The amount that the auditor quoted includes credit cards and cash?
Yes.
Okay. Why always use cash?
Other questions from the committee? Other members of council? Members of the public?
Well, what company?
Can you come to the podium, please, and state your name and your address and whether you represent a group?
Oh, no. My name's Ann Cornwell. I'm a CPA, and I used to be an auditor. So, when I hear this, I just, and I also work a lot with credit cards and cornwell properties. So, I'm just curious what company is used. And I have seen, you know, we have a parking lot that sits next to attractions, and that has some high parking fees, I've found out lately. And it's coming because you might have someone that pays $2 for parking, and they might charge a flat fee of like $1. So, that can really hurt. So, I would just be curious what company it is.
It's called IPS. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, IPS. And there's a lot within the back hall of the IPS system where, you know, there's telemetry associated with it. We're receiving data real-time as well as the transactions that are taking place. But again, this is going back to what was in the original agreement, which we will have the law director review. I'm sure that Director Stone will be working with the law director, and I know that the treasurer has been looking into this as well, or at least is certainly aware during the last auditor-mayor meeting, to find out where things have gone differently in what was the original agreement versus now somebody, I can't remember who it was, but someone sat there and swiped a card and looked at their receipt, and their receipt just showed a $1 charge on there, which means that that service charge, which is typical with any credit card, is likely now being borne by the City of Athens to cover that service charge.
Are you also using Park Mobile? Because Park Mobile has their own processing company, and then you have when you just put the credit card in. So, you have two companies, probably?
I'll have to check on that.
Okay. So, maybe the problem is with one of those companies?
Sure.
I would say. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Member Swank?
One other thing related to this, until we get this information, it would probably be prudent to put the other fee ordinance we're considering on hold. And by that, I mean the ordinance that we're considering, what we are going to be charging for parking, until we get some idea on what our net cost is. And I believe that's up for second reading next time. I think unless we have that information, I think we should push that down the road a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll get that information quickly. You know, I don't see a reason to hold. You know, I, look, council has asked the administration to come forward with fees and fines earlier in the year. We've already gone and parsed them now into four different buckets, and now we're seeing things being tabled and things being held or whatever. For this, it's a phone call to IPS and going, what's the deal with the service, you know, the service charge for the transactions?
So, we should be able to expect the answer to that phone call next Monday?
Well, let's hope so.
Great.
Yes, Member McCary?
Is there a due date for the fees that you're aware of?
Not that I am aware of.
I hope that we can avoid a late fee.
Agreed. Okay, another appropriation on the same parking enforcement fund services line is a $20,000 appropriation for maintenance to our parking meters. Questions from the committee on this appropriation?
What's it for?
I mean, Mayor, we maintain our own meters, and we, as you know, now have meter collectors who are also trained to maintain the meters. So, I believe this would be for that.
It's for parts. And we've had an inordinate number of parking meters that have been run over, backed over, taken.
Wow.
So, it's parts.
Other members of council? Members of the public? Anything to add, Mayor? Okay. And that ends our appropriations. Final item on the finance and personnel agenda are updates from the Ohio Revised Code to amend Title 17 Municipal Income Tax. And on council's drive, you'll see quite a bit of information provided by the auditor's office on the House Bill 33 and the legislative update of those municipal income tax revisions and necessary additions to our local municipal code. We do not have the current, very specific language for our municipal code, but we do have the language that is shown here that we would like to add to our tax code based on these laws passed by the legislature. And the law director's office is currently reviewing this sample language we received from the tax group. And when that has been reviewed and ready for council, we'll come forward with the exact language for our municipal code. Auditor, would you like to say something?
Well, just as far as that language, that is draft language that we have received from RITA, which is a regional income tax association. They collect taxes for a lot of entities throughout the state, including Nelsonville. And we collect our own income tax. And the, one of our tax administrators met with the law director and also Jesse Brenner Hiddle, who is in the law director, to review it this morning. So, there won't be very many changes, if any, to that language that I sent out. I don't know if you have any specific questions. Some of the changes that were made, we already have in our code. We don't collect taxes from people under 18. The fees, late fees have gone way down. $25 is not much of a deterrent from $150. But there's just other things. Also, part of the language has to do with remote employees and how the company sets that. That's for businesses only. Yeah, some of the other things we don't do, when someone gets a federal extension for their taxes, they don't have to send us a copy of that until they file in October. So, extensions are due now. And so, we're prohibited from sending them notices and things about, you know, late fees or whatever you might owe, which we don't do anyway. So, we wait and see who has filed. But it's all new language passed by the legislature that we really have to put in our code.
And for the committee's, you know, knowledge, the recommended additions to our code are quite extensive. I will not go through and read it all tonight, but it will be provided to you for review for the next meeting. As the auditor noted, there are a number of qualifying remote work location definitions and reporting locations and qualifying reporting locations, et cetera, et cetera, connected to the tax code. So, we will get this to you. Member Spionas?
Thank you. So, I was wondering, obviously, we've lost a lot of tax income because people who work for OU or whatever have been remote workers. Is this going to change any of that? Are we going to get some more revenue based on these new provisions?
No, no, no. It has more to do with remote workers. So, we know a lot of people, you could consider them remote, I guess, work from home. But there are also more operations where you can go to like the Armory and work out of another space like that. And this has more to do with that and how much they, they report as for remote working versus local working. Right here, it's just how they apportion it, how much time they spend out of town versus in town near the business. But it won't change. This is already going on. I don't think it'll change our revenue at all.
That's too bad.
Yeah. Other members of the committee? Other members of council? Members of the public? Mayor, anything to add? Thank you. That ends finance and personnel.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Crowell. We'll now move on to city and safety services. This is chaired by Councilmember McCary and joined by councilmembers Grace, Swank, and Crowell.
Thank you, President Reisner. Our first item on the agenda is our tabled ordinance 9323. And I recognize that this will likely be a dynamic conversation, so I'm going to do my best to try and manage time and appreciate folks' efforts to be concise where possible. I want to thank Lieutenant Riley for going and joining our administrative table. And our objective this evening is really to better understand the causes of these fire code violations and also to determine what changes to local bar operations are most likely to result in measurable reductions in fire code violations. So, in order to keep us moving along, my intention is to first invite Lieutenant Riley to provide a summary and any updates regarding the perspective of the administration. If the mayor wants to join any of those comments, that's entirely appropriate. I'd then like to get a quick summary of concerns and updates from bar representatives. Of course, we'll invite comments and questions from committee members, council members, administration, and we may need to then have some time for responses. But ultimately, we're trying to get recommendations from committee members regarding next steps for ordinance 9323. So, with that, I'd like to invite the administration, perhaps starting with Lieutenant Riley, to give any additional updates about these concerns.
So, we have been, I don't know if you want some past history here, but we have been doing bar checks for years, and it seems like it's always the same problem with overcrowding. It's always the same places. And at the end of the day, we want to provide a safe place for the patrons and the citizens who's at these bars. So, we do the bar checks, and they're overcrowded, they're overcrowded, they're overcrowded, and it doesn't seem like we get anywhere. And it's like, you know, we're beating our head against the wall here. So, we start looking at this, and the fine, I think, from home, there's $150 can be issued. And it seems to be like that's the only, only thing we have is this fine of $150. And at the end of the day, we are just looking for something that has some teeth into it. I mean, we want to provide a safe place for everybody, and we feel like we're getting blown off because it's the same thing, time after time after time. The $150 doesn't seem to mean anything to them. You know, we've had reports of them saying, we don't care, we'll just pay it. Pack them in. So, that's as far as I got.
Appreciate that. And of course, this topic is before our city and safety services committee, so the objective here is absolutely safety. And with that in mind, I would like to get a sense of who among the bar representatives intends to share some information today? Okay, it looks like two folks. All right. Could we begin with you approaching the podium, reminding us of who you are and who you represent, and any updates regarding these concerns?
Yes, thank you. I'm Attorney Andrew Grillo. I work across the street here at Toy Law Office at 11 East Washington Street, representing my client, Mr. DeLuca, his son, Mr. DeLuca as well, poppers, and the red brick. Just so it's clear, I don't know if I was super clear last time. Those are my clients. Those are who I am here representing here today, although it may kind of get a little bit entangled with other bar owners. You'll hear from them later. I did get a chance, good evening, first of all, I did get a chance to kind of scroll through other similarly situated cities in Ohio. I looked at the city of Oxford where Miami University was. I looked at the city of Kent where Kent State University was, and I looked at Bowling Green. Obviously, that's not an exclusive list of similarly situated cities, but I tried to get a guess as to what their possible penalties were for these situations. I will start by the city of Oxford. It appears that they only have a civil criminal, or civil penalty of $500, and that is it. It can be issued by the fire marshal or chief or whoever was, whoever has authority under that statute. And there's some, you know, if it's delinquent, then it's $1,000, and if it's sent for collection, then it's $1,250. They did not appear to have a criminal offense for their overcrowding problem. I did look, it's a little bit confusing. I looked through it. One of, it was listed as like 1076, but it did not exist in their ordinance, but it was referenced. So, it's kind of a mess. So, bear with me a little bit on that. I do have links. I will, I will share that with everybody to their codes or ordinances, so you guys can look at them as well. Then I got to the city of Kent. It appears that they had, for their fire prevention measures and fire protection activities, they had a minor misdemeanor as well, which obviously, as you guys are aware, carries up to $150 fine. That is Section B of 150105. There's also a 150105A. However, that does make it kind of a sliding scale penalty or misdemeanor of the first degree, which is the serious, most serious misdemeanor you can have of $1,000 and a six-months incarceration time. Finally, I looked at Bowling Green, and it was an unclassified misdemeanor and a fine of $500. And again, these are all really messy areas, so I will continue to look through and parse through this information. With that being said, this was homecoming weekend, and I believe my clients, I don't, I don't think there was many citations for offenses this weekend from all the bars across. My clients did not have any. They're just here to ask for a kind of proposal of they're okay with a sliding scale punishment. They do not want, obviously, the jail penalties or any sort of liquor license suspension at that time. Obviously, I think just the issue being in front of you guys has obviously woken everybody up. Compliance has been up. I know they've been trying to, trying to do their best. They, they did well this weekend. And, you know, that's, that's where we're at. That's our proposal. And again, one other thing I think that we failed to mention last time is, if you do, kind of, who cites these violations, if it is criminal, I think that kind of brings in the police department more so than it would be the fire department, too. I think they may need a seat at the table to try to see how are we going to enforce these issues if you do, you know, obviously criminalize it even more. Because I think at the end of the day... Because I think at the end of the day, they're the ones who can, you know, file it with the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor can be the one who filed these charges upon, you know, receiving that complaint. So I think that may be an issue that, another angle that we need to probably address prior to imposing penalty. So I'll keep it brief. That's what I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd just like to ask if you have any updates regarding intended actions on the part of bars you represent to decrease the number of violations?
I know from speaking with my clients, and I don't know about everybody else, obviously, they, I've told them to train their employees, and I think they've done that. I think they've had them, you know, sign that they know this is the capacity. I think there's limits posted on the doors. And additionally, I think whether it be a pitch counter in baseball or something, to have one of those handy at the door person to say, this is our occupancy. So you know how many people are coming in. If somebody goes out, then you can, you know, reset it or do whatever you need to do to make sure you're compliant. And then obviously to, you know, have conversations with, you know, work with the fire department, work with the police officers, make sure that if they say, you know, you got to have three people out, make sure you get three people out or, you know, kind of hold the door. So that's kind of what I've advised my clients to do. They've, they've seemed to listen to me so far. I hope that continues. So, thank you.
Thank you. I recognize that committee members may have questions at this time. First, for our bars representatives currently at the podium, and then we'll perhaps explore other questions. But do we have any questions for, yes, Councilmember Swank?
I would like either Mr. Grillo or is it Lieutenant Riley?
Yes, sir.
One or both to explain the counting process.
So for the bar owners, people working the door, they have a counter, which we supplied them, you know, one in, one out. For us, we show up, we look at it. If it looks super packed or whatever, we start doing a head count to the best of our ability. And sometimes we ask the person, the manager or maybe the gate person, if they would like to count them with us. And then we start doing a count to see how, what we get up to.
And every bar, based on a variety of factors, square footage, sprinkled or not, ingress egress has a capacity number. Let's say that Mr. DeLuca's bar is 150. I'm just picking a number out of the air. And you do the count and it comes up 160. What is the first step?
So at that step, myself, I would probably say, hey, you are 10 over, so you need to lose some people. So we will sit there and we will let 10 or so people go out before anybody else goes in.
Okay. And when that happens, is that what generally happens? Or are you met with, what do you mean, it's 160? It's really 140 in here. In most cases, are the owners cooperative and able to, you know, for lack of a better term, rid the bar of that excess number of people?
Sometimes, you know, they say, no, we don't want to count or we don't think there's that many there. And worse comes to worse, we would shut the place down and count them all as they come out. And then we would have, we would have the exact number, and then they can count them as they go back in.
Well, I had the law director run a report for me that goes back to April 1st of 2019. And in that time period, and this is up through 9/25 of 2023, there were 14 incidents where people were actually cited. Of those 14, three are still pending, two were dismissed, which means we had nine of these violations that went all the way to a fine. You've been with the department for some time. That's roughly a four-year period. Is this showing an increase in problems, similar to what problems have been in the past, or a decrease in problems? What I'm trying to get at here is are we seeing a change in a pattern?
So, well, we have more students. So I think that it has increased. I have not did bar checks in a year or two, but from my understanding, it seems to have increased. I don't think that a long time ago, we issued the fines. I think maybe the mayor or somebody know, but that only started several years ago is when that process started. So to me, it seems like by reading the report there that we're getting slightly worse.
Thank you, Members Swank. Questions or comments from other committee members? How about other members of council at this time? Councilmember Isner?
You mentioned training the employees to follow the rules and know what's going on. But first, student employees, you have a pretty high churn rate. How do you keep maintaining a level of expertise there on something that's critical?
You know, I think it just goes to the bar owners. I think that's going to be their duty to ensure kind of what they need to do, whether that's, you know, an employee packet, a hiring packet, or if you're going to work the door, you got to follow these rules because if not, then obviously it could ruin it for everyone. I don't think there would be an unreasonable ask despite having a high turnover rate. I would hope college students could follow directions and learn and do those things. But, you know, I'm not necessarily, I'm somewhat removed from college, so I don't know necessarily how it would be. And then one, one last thing, and I know they kind of mentioned it there. I think one thing would be, you know, emptying out a whole. I think one thing we may need to probably work on would be a policy for isn't overcrowding, to make sure that that's safe too. I would have concern if, you know, we just dumped out however many people were at the bar under the street, where there's cars, other intoxicated students who may not have been at the bars or people or traffic. I think that would create a safety risk in and of itself. I think maybe that there could be some sort of, you know, a policy imposed to say, hey, if there is a way to do this, this is how we follow it, that they get an instruction from the fire chief or the police officer to say, hey, you got 30 minutes to figure it out. If not, then, you know, you're going to get a citation and go forward from there. And I would hope that everybody would be, play ball with that. So just thank you for the opportunity to be heard. Yep.
You said the bar owners obviously don't want the jail as a penalty, but you're trying to come up with other things. And you said you wouldn't mind a sliding scale kind of penalty, and you mentioned something else, and I don't think I caught that.
Oh, sorry, that was sliding scale of fines. And the other one, you know, they didn't really want to do anything that affect, you know, the bar's livelihood, which would be the liquor license. That's what I said. Sorry if I mumbled that.
I want to point out that you mentioned that having them sign a doc, all the employees or whoever is at the door, sign a document saying that they understood that this was the maximum of people that could be in there. As part of that, it would be, I've received the training that blah, 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 so that they are documenting both, and that would be maintained in the files of all employees.
I would hope so. That would be a good business practice. You know, obviously, each business has their own decision as to whether or not they would want to do. That would be my professional legal advice, you know, reading the statute and dealing with the possible penalties and kind of knowing what happens when, when people do get charged in sort of situations like that. Obviously, they can do what they want, but that would be my advice for everybody to, you know, you know, make sure that there's something that you have that says they've received this training. So we know who's, where the problem is and how to fix it if that's one person's bad egg.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone else from the audience who intended to speak to come forward. And please introduce yourself, identify if you're representing a particular organization or just yourself, please.
My name's Don Pepper. I own the CI and the Crystal. I drew the short straw and was the victim that had to be chose to come up here and talk. I started managing bars in 1979. I started owning bars in 1987. I've worked the front door for 35 years. I still work the front door on Halloween just because I like getting dressed up and getting silly. So I think my experience working the front door lets me know how to check IDs. I have to check IDs. I know the fire department isn't concerned with that. But we do have to check IDs and make sure people are of illegal age. We check capacity, and I keep out drunks. We get more problem with people drinking at house parties and whatever, coming uptown, trying to get in the bar. They are a major problem. So those are my three main jobs working the front door. Since I've been in business for 40 years, I have worked with several fire chiefs. When I first got here in the 80s, Gary Bruce was the fire, fire chief, and he was a numbers guy. He followed the numbers that we had posted. We had to follow that. He was very intense about it, which resulted in probably 90% of the bars going to an architect to get our capacities changed, and they were changed. After Gary was, I don't remember the next guy, but he didn't do anything. It was a free for all. We could let in however many people we wanted. And what we discovered during this time was it didn't pay to let, to pack your bars. It's always nice to be able to walk to the bar, to have a free, a free entrance to the bar because you're not going to make any money if you can't serve drinks. So we learned that during this free for all period. After that, we had Chief Troxel come in. He enforced loosely the numbers, but he was more concerned with fire exits and entrances being cleared. And he wanted to be able to walk through the bar. And that's what we wanted. We want people to be able to walk through the bar because we want them to get to the bar so they buy drinks. So that's our goal. Ironically, during Chief Troxel's term, he had state fire marshals come down. I think there were four years in a row that we had state marshals come down. Weekend before Halloween, they'd come in and inspect the place. And then they would come in on Halloween night and check capacities. After two years of dealing with state fire marshals strongly enforcing the law, the last two years, they were coming down, they were going, why are we here? There is no sense in this. You guys do a great job. We are going to recommend that we do not come back again, and we haven't seen them since. So the bars have done their job. Over the, and now we have Chief Reimer coming in. He is back to the numbers guy. He is looking at numbers. He wants us to abide strictly by numbers. Over the past 40 years, being a bar owner and being a fire, we have an adversarial relationship. I mean, we are going to count 160, they're going to count 220. It's just an, I mean, we just have that kind of relationship. So we are going to have a difference of opinion. What I would like to see for this report is I would like data on how many injuries have been caused by overcrowding in bars. I would like to see any, and I would like to see reports of overcrowding in bars. We keep talking about, well, you know, we had nine violations over the last three years. Well, nine or four years, that's two violations a year. I mean, is this something we need to be that concerned about? I know that in our bar, we follow the rules. We try and play the game. Anyway, I cannot help but respond to Chief, Chief Reimer's comments at the last meeting. I'd like to remind him that there are no matches or cigarettes allowed in bars because there's no smoking. All right? Half of us have a sprinkler system. So where is the danger there?
Mr. Pepper, if you could bring your comments to conclusion.
Yeah, I'm almost done. He also commented, we make thousands of dollars. We do make thousands of dollars, but we make it on 30 weekends a year. That leaves 22 weekends where we are dead. All right? So we only got 30 weekends with students in here. And yes, we would like to maximize what we can make those 30 weekends of the year. He made the third comment about blocked doorways. I know the first thing that I do when I walk into my bar in the morning is open up and make sure that every doorway is open and there's nothing blocking entrances or exits. He made the comment, I think it was over one bar, over a five-year period, and I think it's not appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Pepper.
Anyway.
President Isley, would you like to advise us on timer?
I just wanted to check, am I remembering correctly that there was a report this weekend of the J-bar? Mayor Patterson, is that correct? The J-bar? So they were, their occupancy is 143?
I believe it's 147.
Okay, 147. The police, the fire department came in and there were 240 people. And that doesn't include the 20 who walked out when the fire department walked in. And I know there's not smoking allowed, but I would only make the comment that safety-wise, there are a lot of other conditions that can happen that can put people at risk, especially in basement situations where there are bars in basements and that there isn't the ability for them to be able to exit. So just this past weekend, you know, just after our conversation last week, here's an instance of clearly being over the limit.
Thank you, President Isley. I think that's a helpful point. I do see your hand in the audience. Please make your way to the podium. We'll go ahead and hear.
For Euclid Drive, and I'm not a bar owner. I just looked at this the first time about an hour ago. It was brought to my attention. And I read it and I don't see the word bar. And that's where I kind of alarm bells went up. It's a big hammer and it's like, is this, is this a hammer's needed to threaten within a pretty broad two-year timeframe of having two things that could be just not following a command? And sometimes that whole thing about command is sort of that touching on a freedom of speech and you're trying to understand what they're saying is lawful, maybe you don't. But this is to the whole community, the way it's written. We're talking like it's only for bars. But the law itself is saying every one of us, the person that's had some interaction with the fire department that they've been unhappy with, the second time, they're putting themselves at risk of jail or you're saying you can't talk. I mean, that's sort of what the law is saying, whether that's what they say they'll implement. I just don't think hammers should be bigger than are needed in laws. And that's, that's what came to me in the first thing I had. And quite, like I said, I just, I hadn't absorbed this. I liked to make a great speech, but I never can anyway, even when I practice. But I just think it needs to be looked at what's actually on the paper, not what the problem, perceived problem that's being attacked or gone after. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. At this point, we need to move toward recommendations for what we, what changes we need to see in order to yield measurable reductions in these fire code violations. Councilmember Swank, would you like to move us in that direction?
Yes, I'd like to pick up on what Mr. Pepper said. And I don't know if he intended to say this or not, but I think it was pretty profound. And I've known Mr. Pepper for a long time. And what Mr. Chapman said is very true also. And because of that, I think we need to back up a little bit. We have formed some task forces for some very significant issues in this city. Pedestrian access being one. Seems like we have several parties that need to come to a table. In fact, I'm kind of disappointed that this thing got to where it is today. Because this is something when I ran for council, I ran on. Engaging people early in the process, not after the train has already left the station. And in many cases, not only has the train left the station, the conductor's already punched the tickets. I would like to see a task force, for lack of a better term, of the following groups. Representatives from retail establishments in this city, bars included. Representatives of the police department or a representative of the police department. Because if we take this through the letter of the law, the police department has to get involved here. Obviously, representatives from the fire department. Because at the end of the day, everybody's interested in safety. And nobody knows fire safety better than our hired and trained fire department. And finally, the appropriate individual or individuals from city council. To sit down and see if we can't work out a plan that does two things. Number one, ensures the safety of every patron that ever walks into any building. And secondly, sanctions that will serve as a deterrent to violating that safety. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Members Swank. Other committee members with recommendations on how to move forward? Other members of council with recommendations? Members of the administration with recommendations?
Thank you. I have a question for any of the bar owners. You know, quite some time ago, there was an Athens Bar Owners Association that, as I understand it, met, I don't know how regular they met, but they met. And during COVID or shortly after COVID, I started engaging with the bar owners. And it was just to talk through protocol, what you're, what are you doing, what are you experiencing? Of late, and a lot of this has come from a more recent meeting when we had, I asked for, I can't remember if it was David Riggs, Director Riggs, or whomever, but it was to reach out to the bar owners to discuss DORA, you know, the plans that the city has for DORA moving forward. So having said that, to Councilmember Swank's points, or one in particular, and it is, you know, I would be more than welcome and open to having a bar owners association come back to life again to where administration, the fire department, the police department, having a representative or someone there who is engaging as well, to where we can continue in this process to figure out a way to make environment safe. You know, the, the You know, the capacity that you guys all have for your buildings, it comes from the state, you know, the Fire Marshal's Office or wherever it comes from. It's, the capacity is for safety. It's for safety for any building. You know, Walmart has a capacity fee. Everybody's got one. It's got a business, I believe, most businesses have these capacity fees, restaurants and whatnot. But I guess my, back to my point is, I would be more than happy to be engaging with the bar owners to have a regular, kind of, just open discussion. Where are things at? What do you see as being issues? You know, to share with Mr. Pepper, and Tony's sitting in the room, Tony Silvestre, I was Tony's doorman for five years of my life. And so I've certainly seen my share. I think Tony at the time had more PhDs working for him than just about any other bar in the city of Athens. My point is, is I hear what you're saying. I hear that there's been a change from one fire chief to the next. Again, I totally support our current fire chief in what he is seeing and experiencing. Because when we've got, you know, our firefighters who are having to protect 11 square miles of city but are spending time having to go back and count or do a recount of establishments when they're just driving by and see, there's a whole lot of people, it appears to me, in said place. I thought maybe that was him. It's not. You know, again, I think that, from the chief and from his vantage point, you know, clearly, people are paying attention to what has been said, what's coming through. So I see an opportunity for us to work together and have an association that meets regularly. Like I said, I'm repeating myself. But I think that that is a starting point to make sure that we're creating the safest environment we possibly can for a large body of individuals who are, hopefully, age 21-plus. Again, I was a doorman. And saw how many people were trying to get in who are underage or having fake IDs and things of that nature. But we need to create a safe environment at the end of the day.
Procedurally, I hear two different things going on. Councilmember Swank has proposed a task force. You're proposing a more, what sounds to me like an ongoing conversation with a bar association. So what we're trying to move through is, this ordinance has been tabled and we're trying to.
I think the mayor and I are exactly on the same page here. We're just using different terminology.
Okay.
A conversation as opposed to an ordinance. Now, it may result in an ordinance down the road, but for now, a conversation to make a safe environment and to establish sanctions that makes sense and get the safety insured.
Okay.
I'm hearing, oh, Member Ziff, did you?
I just wanted to add one thing, just because it's a, it's a phrase that, I won't say it bothers me, but I feel like it's important to clarify something. It was said by, I believe it was Mr. Pepper. I don't think I've ever had the pleasure of meeting before. Hello. I don't believe that it's necessarily appropriate to look at fire safety regulation by based, you know, basing our plans of action off of issues we've already experienced. Fire prevention is the largest part of fire safety. It's making sure that we don't have issues by looking ahead and trying to look at where we are now. That being said, I just wanted to add that I appreciated everybody here showing up. When we talked about this last week, I'm a big believer in touting positive things when they're there. And we said last week when we tabled this ordinance, it was entirely, this was the entire point, was to try and engage with people like Councilmember Swank was just saying. So I wanted to thank you for being here, each and every one of you. I've spent a fair amount of time in, I thank every one of your bars. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you for those comments, Member Ziff. And I do again want to, I guess, go back to something Mr. Pepper also mentioned as far as the conflict or an adversarial relationship between fire safety and bars and differences of opinion, even with counts. With this, I believe it's such an important issue that we can't look at counts as a matter of opinion. These are numbers and we need to be enforcing them. So I appreciate, to Members Ziff and other points, that this has been a beginning of a dialogue that people are interested in continuing, whether that's through mediation or the re-establishment of the Bar Owners Association. I do believe that we are in no hurry to move this legislation forward and that we have the opportunity to look at this as a wake-up call that's going to perhaps result in some improved training and procedural things at the bars. And then to our fire department, I believe we would need to look to you for a measured improvement in a certain amount of time. I appreciate that there's been some observations about how things went this weekend, but I think we would need at least over the next month to see how we, how these conversations are impacting changes. Do it, yes, Member Spielman.
Thank you. Okay. And I don't remember your name, but the attorney who spoke for, at first, he came up with some thoughts which we had talked about in terms of having employees sign, you know, an agreement that yes, if they're going to do this job, they're going to do these things. And he talked about the willingness potentially for a sliding scale penalty. So there's some things that I'm curious, if you could raise your hand or something, how do you feel about those? Is that something that you're comfortable with? Having your employees sign those forms? Is that, does that seem like a reasonable idea?
Literally a show of hands?
Literally a show of hands? Okay.
It's a lot of hands and you can't see it at all.
Okay, and possibly a sliding scale if of penalties? I mean, I'm not in favor of the jail idea, I think, except under the most excruciating, extreme circumstances. But I think a sliding scale kind of, how do you feel about that? If people really aren't doing what they're supposed to? You're okay with that? All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Spielman. I appreciate the informal poll that does give us a sense of where we might be able to move. But we also need to recognize that we're not going to solve this tonight. So I do recognize that people have more thoughts and we will need to continue those in another forum. I have heard the recommendation of a task force. Let's maybe just take one more comment and then we'll need to, two more comments and then we'll need to move on for the night. Please reintroduce yourself and remind us if you're representing an organization before you share your comments.
My name is Ian Cornwell again, and I'm just here as a public member. I'm an accountant, as I said before, I'm an auditor, and I'm a tax accountant. So I would like to know, where do these capacity numbers come from? Sometimes I'm in bars and I will look at the numbers. You know, if I had a time, I would have gone around and made a list of everyone. But I'm just going to give an example. When I heard that the J-bar is 147, that to me doesn't seem very large for the big open space the J-bar is. I mean, have you been there? You know, you walk in, it's very big, the ceilings are high, we have huge windows, and then there's a balcony up ahead. So I just asked the question, the pub is right next door. I said, what is the capacity of the pub? I just got told it's 134. So have you been in the pub? The pub is much, much smaller. If I had to get out of the pub, you know, it would be a lot harder than getting out of the J-bar. I go to the J-bar a decent amount, it's a very open space. I've never felt that I couldn't get out. So I would like to know, why is the pub 134 and why is the J-bar 147? I would say not even thinking that the J-bar should be 200.
Thank you. We will try and get some additional information about how those determinations are made. And can we hear from our last audience member? Please go ahead and introduce yourself and let us know if you're representing just yourself or an organization.
Yes, my name is Chris Roach and I'm a business partner with the Pigskin Bar and Grill on Court Street. And I guess I have a couple of quick things and I promise I'll try to make this as quick as I possibly can. I feel like this is a big focus on just a small part of Athens. We're looking at just a section of Court Street. And I'm just wondering with the fire department, if anybody else is being looked at? Or is this, are we just focused on that section of Court Street? Second thing is, I think that between, at least I'll speak for myself, I know what our capacity is, our capacity is 249. At that point in time, we have somebody at the front door using a clicker that was provided by the fire department. And then we have somebody at the back door making sure that nobody comes in and out of our patio. So we have a very accurate count. And I go through on a lot of busy nights and make sure that I'm individually counting and checking with my door staff to make sure we're on the same page. And that's with knowing whether the fire department will be in or not. We're just keeping track for safety reasons. But I guess my question is to the fire department is, how exactly is that counting happening with you guys?
So, as far as where else we go, at the end of the day, we only have so many hours and so many people. So we tend to go where the problems are, and the problem is on Court Street. Now, with that being said, if anybody is anywhere in town and you think someplace is overcrowded or over the capacity, feel free to call us. But at the end of the day, every time we have a problem, it is, it is on Court Street or that general vicinity. Again, that's where, you know, whatever 27,000 college students tend to go. That's half of our population or over. As far as the counting, you know, a lot of this stuff is set by the state, based upon your exit signs, square footage, all that stuff. I know they have some things that they add into it, but that's way, that's way beyond me. I don't set that. That's set by the state and the Fire Marshal's Office.
I guess what I was trying to get at, thank you for answering my questions, is how do you physically count? Are you taking sections of the business and saying, okay, there's 20 people here, mark it into four sections, times three sections, if you have a wide business? And all of a sudden, you come up with that count of 200 people?
I think they try their best to do a head count. And it's, like I said, they will ask the, there are several cases here where they have asked the bar person or the manager if they would like to head count with them. And they walk through the bar and get a head count.
And if you, if you ask the manager or the owner, whoever it might be, to exit, have everybody exit, is the counting happening as they're exiting? Is that for sure happening to know if that count is correct?
Yeah, I believe that's what we just did this weekend. We told them to exit. Are you telling them when they close the bar down to count as they all come out? We count them as they all come out? That's what you're asking?
You do? Yes, that's what I was asking. So what happens if the count is off? So all of a sudden, we've asked all the customers to leave the business for, say, probably 45 minutes and we find out that our count was right or even under?
Well, we asked the door person or the manager to count with us. If they don't want to do that, then like I said, we go through and count. But you've got to have a little bit of leeway in this. And we did this enough to know when we go to this bar, we've counted the people enough times that we know that, hey, this is way over the amount you're supposed to do. Let's do a head count. And last time they did the head count, and then the last bar, I believe they was 100 people over. So I would say they probably got that one right.
Thank you. That's all the time we have for comments today, but I appreciate the mayor's suggestion about the potential re-establishment of the Bar Owners Association and would ask the mayor whether or not you would welcome emails from bar owners who are willing to become part of that group going to you.
Sure. I'm fine with that. And let me just qualify. I, the reason I brought that up is that we have open lines of communication. That's what that's about. When it comes to fees and fines and things like that, that's a whole different story. I'm just saying, let's communicate, you know, so that we're all on the same page together and have that open dialogue. Because for me, I think that's all of us being responsible together.
President Isley, I would like to recommend that we return to this topic at a future committee meeting to see what progress has been made. Hopefully, that will include the re-establishment of the Bar Owners Association and that dialogue that the mayor's emphasizing. But procedurally, it's my understanding that this will remain tabled until someone removes it from the table. So we need to take no action at this time.
What will be most helpful is to get an update then?
Yes.
And so if you anticipate, we, our committees meet every two weeks. And so if you're ready to come back in two weeks with some kind of recommendations from this task force, I realize that might be a little quick, but.
It might be at least.
It might be four weeks out, so.
And it might be at least time enough to get a sense of whether or not we can come together for this dialogue. So I want to thank everyone for the extensive amount of time and the folks who've come here to speak. And we'll move on to our next committee agenda item for the night. Thank you.
Who wants to stay for sanitary sewers, huh?
Thank you. All right. The second and only remaining item on our City and Safety Services agenda for this evening is accepting a sanitary utility easement for Tyler Park. Councilmembers have the language for the utility easement in the drive. This easement is made and entered into on the date of the signature below by Erie Land Corporation LLC? Is that right? An Ohio limited liability company whose mailing address is 500 South Front Street, 10th, was that? No. Columbus, Ohio and the city of Athens for and in consideration of the sum of $1 cash in hand, the receipt of which is hereby acknowledged for the sanitary utility easement for the Tyler Park lift station and related equipment and the right to maintain, repair, and/or replace as needed the lift station utility lines and related equipment. The easement area includes a 1.1568 acre sanitary utility easement located in the city of Athens, Athens Township, Athens County, State of Ohio, Section 22, Township 9 North, Range 14 West, Farm Lot Number 101, and being a part of a 4.06 acre parcel conveyed to Erie Land Corporation LLC by a deed as recorded in official record 585, page 1,324 of Athens County Recorder's Office. There is some additional information here, further details, but this seems like something we should accept. I mean, so, yeah, Mr. Mayor, do you have something to add?
Just that this is a standard easement for utility. And yes, it is something we should add.
We have questions or comments from committee members? Other members of council? Audience members? Okay, that was easy and it was just a dollar, so that sounds good to me. All right. With that, we'll conclude City and Safety Services for the evening. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you, Councilmember McCary. We'll move on now to Transportation Committee. This is chaired by Councilmember Reisner, joined by Councilmembers Grace, Ziff, and Swank.
Get rid of more vehicles.
Thank you, Madam President. Transportation Committee. I see on our, my agenda here on the computer is a little different than I see up on the screen, but it's vehicle disposal. A bus, number 1601 from Hapcap, a 2011 Ford Ranger Code Office, and the fire smoke trailer. I don't have any documentation in front of me and I don't see anything in the packet that has anything to do with this. But I'm assuming this is just our normal way of disposing vehicles for bid or giveaway and service safety directors hereby authorized to, and so on and so forth. Is that about it? Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
That is about it. A little bit more information that I can share. The smoke trailer, we have a new smoke trailer. So the smoke trailer, we would like to donate that to the city of Chillicothe. They're very interested in taking the smoke trailer and putting it to good use in their community. The Ranger will likely be used as trade-in. And then the bus, if you haven't seen the Hapcap bus, it's in terrible shape and it will likely just go to scrap. It is a nonusable vehicle.
Any comments from the committee? Other members of council, Members Spielman?
Well, maybe perhaps I'm the only one, but what exactly is a fire smoke trailer?
It's a training trailer. They can use it, they've used it with our schools. They've used it at the Athens area stand-down to where they can do training for individuals if warranted to where you enter into it and you learn how in a smoke-filled room environment, you drop to the ground. you drop to the ground, go below the smoke, crawl out. But it's all simulated. I mean, they're not using smoke-smoke. They're using simulated smoke inside this environment that's non-toxic and non-carcinogenic. And they can do other kinds of training inside that trailer as well.
Any other questions? Other members? Other elected officials? Members of the audience? Okay. That concludes, I guess, Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. We'll now return to Committee of the Whole, and we have up for discussion the tabled ordinance 9923, which was discussing a variety of fee increases. The one I think that drew the most attention last time was the specialty vendor's license of the $100 per month. So I'd like to open that up. I know we wanted to return for additional discussion, so I'll open it up to council members for comments and discussion. Councilmember Crowell, yes?
Thank you, President Isley. I had just been thinking about this and was involved with some vendor discussions early on in my tenure as a council member. And what we've tried to do for some time is to link the vendor permit fees to the cost of renting the parking space, which makes sense to me. But in thinking about this more deeply, and quite frankly, since COVID, missing the kind of wonderful selection of food vendors that used to be on East Union Street, I've come to the realization that I think vending in the city of Athens is an attraction to the city of Athens. I think it's something that makes us a more unique city, that makes us interesting to visitors, and that tying the permit fees directly to the cost of the spaces is not, is no longer sort of essential in my mind. So I'm just thinking about this a little bit differently. And certainly, the homemade vendor license should be part of that conversation. I do know that there are vendors who are, food vendors, who are doing quite well in that space, but I do think it's very different for handcrafted items, and I think council should take that into consideration as we talk about this issue. Thank you, President Isley.
Yes, Councilmember Swank?
So I guess I would ask the council member to go a little further with that. I think I know where you're going. Are you thinking that we should just set a fee for vending that has nothing to do with the amount of revenue we will not collect from parking meters? And if so, what would that fee be?
Yeah. I am thinking that it doesn't need to be connected to what we would have received from a car parking in that location. You know, I do want to hear from, you know, City Code, because, you know, many years ago, there was an annual fee, and we convened a group that, an ad hoc group, that included bricks and mortar representative as well as a few vendors. And we came up with the monthly fee process, because we did hear from vendors that there were certain months of the year where they were just not going to be there. So they were paying for months that they were not using the service. And when we had Councilor McGee on the, on council, he was very adamant about looking at his law offices and seeing the open spaces during most of the time. So we were trying to balance those things out, open those spaces back up if they weren't going to be used, give the vendors a little bit more chance to make some money if they weren't going to vend over the winter months, for example. And so we changed it to a monthly fee. But I would have to talk, and I have not, to the code director about the administrative difficulties with having a monthly fee for some vendors, a yearly fee for other vendors, you know, what we're talking about in terms of how, you know, if you have ideas about how we're doing this differently.
I'd like to call on Mayor Patterson.
May I? Thank you, President Isley. Let me kind of walk you through a few things. First off, I'd like to say that I feel strongly that for the amount of revenue that someone who's making homemade wares, i.e. jewelry or something like that, what they're going to be able to vend at the street versus someone who's selling, oh, let's just say, Chick-fil-A out of a trailer right there in the Uptown area, is wildly different in terms of their ability to make a living versus someone else, a food vendor. So therefore, one of the things I would like to propose to council is that kind of honoring the 1% for the arts for an artisan who's making their own wares is that we keep it in alignment with what a, what the peddler or solicitor's monthly fee is, which is $25 a month. It's not a 30-day month. It's a calendar month. So again, they can choose when they would like to vend and pay $25 as an artisan to vend in the Uptown designated vending spaces. I will also mention, just for educational purposes, that currently, a food vendor in the city of Athens can vend on private commercial property and use the, again, it's the vending fee for that is $25 a month to vend elsewhere, because they're going to the places where they know that there is a need for food sources, that there may not be a restaurant within walking distance, or it's such a distance that they certainly could walk to it, but there goes their lunch hour to be able to go get something and then walk back to work as opposed to, a great example would be Appalachian Behavioral Health, or something in that vicinity. When it comes to our city right-of-way, you know, in particular, our metered right-of-way, I, when I was a city council member way back when, I was certainly involved with not only the Uptown Business Association, but I was involved with other bricks and mortar business owners and looking at and getting a great understanding as to what their overhead is when it comes to their leases, as well as, you know, other things, the number of employees that they're employing, you know, is vastly, vastly different than what it costs at the meter to basically rent a meter space month to month for an individual whose overhead is very different than that for our Uptown businesses. Our Uptown businesses are, you know, their survival is based upon those walk-ins that are going to be coming uptown. And so therefore, to not have anything, to have something less than for a food truck, for a vendor who's using the city right-of-way on East Union or on Richland Avenue, North Richland Avenue, or South Congress, whatever you want to call it, or at Armory, Armory Street. I should also point out that currently, and this is in my mind wrong, is that for a vendor who has a vending permit under those three locations, because of the size of a lot of the vehicles, if you've got a true trailer, you've got to have a Ford F-250 or whatever to sit there and haul and get that thing into place, we have to set aside two parking spaces for that particular vendor. And when we do so, we're setting aside two vending, two metered spaces within the vending area at all three locations. We're doing it at East Union, we're doing it at South North Richland, and we're doing it at the Armory as well, holding six spaces for an individual under that. I want that to change to, to where, sure, there's three locations, but rather than a vendor being given two locations at all three sites, they pick and choose which site do they want to use for a given month. They can change it and go, ah, the Armory's open and fully live and active. I want a space up at the Armory as opposed to getting something on East Union Street. I certainly appreciate the conversation, but I did want to give that context when it comes to a bricks and mortar versus a vending space, an artist versus someone who is selling food to where they're able to generate a lot of revenue per day, more revenue per day, I should say, than is an art vendor. And the other thing with an art vendor, an art vendor might only need a quarter of the parking space of a vending space. In talking with Cricket Jones, and I've seen Cricket Jones set up, Cricket Jones basically sets up a table that's taking up a quarter of a parking space, maybe a little bit more. And if there were other vendors who also want to do that, to basically share a space together, would be fine. Now, they're still going to have the $25, if council approves this, a $25 a month, you know, fee that they pay to be able to vend any month of the year they choose to. But I think that, for me, I think that's the right path to take. I'm just throwing that out to council to sit there and certainly consider it. But please keep in mind, the vending spaces that exist right now, that there is clearly competition when it comes to our bricks and mortar restaurants that are paying, as hopefully you're all aware, a much higher overhead because of their being able to operate in a leased, most often a leased space. Some of those buildings are owned by the owners, but.
So comments from council members on that proposal? Councilmember Spielman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think those are good comments, and I really appreciate that in providing us with some perspective. But I think it brings up a point that was raised earlier by Member Swank, and that is that I believe that we should be seeing these kinds of discussions with the vendors as we do with the bar, as we are proposing to do with the bar owners, to come up with ideas for fees in all these different categories to make sure that we're really considering the stakeholders' situations and positions, and then, and also what's best for the city. So I think that these conversations should have happened before we come up with fees, and I'd like to recommend that we do that in the future. We do have to get this done, and I think that what the mayor had to say was, was good for now, in my opinion.
Councilmember McCary, and then Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, Member Spielman. I appreciate the mayor's recommendation for the $25 art vendor fee as well. And I was looking at our comprehensive plan for any guidance about our intentions of further supporting the arts. And we do have in that plan a section on history, culture, artistic, and creative spirit. And the closest thing I see here under public art and events is that more public art is desired throughout the city, including neighborhoods. There were repeated requests that art offerings should be diverse in format, medium, and artists. And I do also think of this in relation to the Athens County Foundation's goals around vibrant communities. And we've seen this council discuss vending as something that has been a concern, decreasing in visibility over the years. So I support Councilmember Spielman's recommendations on further dialogue, but also specifically the mayor's recommendation on the $25 per month charge.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace?
Thank you, President Isley. I just wanted to say, to me, a $25 per month for specialty vending makes sense. And I think we might want to also clarify in the language that, you know, that it specifically excludes food. So perhaps someone who thinks their food is particularly artistic wouldn't try to get by with that. And also, I want to acknowledge that Member Crowell and members of our current audience and Uptown Business Association did meet and worked very hard to try to communicate with food truck owners and to make changes and recommendations to this. And so it just, that is something that has been really, really looked at and worked on, and I want to commend Member Crowell for the time and effort that was put into those meetings and say that if anyone has perspective on, on that issue, he certainly does.
Councilmember Swank?
In a couple of weeks, I'm going to Asheville, North Carolina. And if, bear with me, three sentences here. The Makers Mark is an outdoor artist market on Grove Arcade South Side. The Battery Park Inn of the Grove Arcade is a home to the Makers Market, an outdoor bazaar with a dozen stalls filled by artisans selling their craft directly to the public. On any given day, you can find handmade jewelry, paintings, clothing, soap, and musical instruments, local honey and farm products, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I will bring back, if we're going to talk about this for a little while, all the detail I can, because I personally shopped at this, and it's encouraging exactly what the mayor's talking about, people on a one-off, one-week-off, one-month-off basis to set up and sell their wares to the public. And it's an area that, Asheville's a huge tourist area anywhere, but it's an area that brings people to that side of town, which also benefits the brick and mortar businesses that are in that area. So I'll bring that back in two weeks.
Further comments?
There are fantastic artists that vend at the Farmer's Market. That, I also want to say that is a space that is provided and in the city and has both a wonderful selection of baked goods, locally raised farm produce, and fabulous artistic treasures and products that can be purchased there. So we do have a wonderful space for that. But just, if anyone's watching, check it out. Go to Farmer's Market.
Councilmember Spielman?
Yes, it's good to know that some conversations were had, and thank you, Member Crowell, for doing that. I would have liked to have known about that a little bit more, because that's important for us to understand, that this wasn't, came up from, didn't come up from the top of somebody's head. That it actually came from dialogue with the community members. That's really important for us to know that there's that perspective. So thank you for that. But what I want to get to is, once again, I'm going to bring up the reinspection fees for rentals that still remains as proposed to be $50, which is a small increase, given how long the $40 was in place since 2005. And I'm going to bring up once again that, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, cost of living increases, if it was $40 in 2005, it should be $62.15 now. And that presumes that it's working. And I don't believe there's anybody in this community who believes that our rentals are as safe as they could be, nor that the, that all of, some of them are great, but not all of the landlords are doing their best to keep our rentals safe. So I would like to have a greater dialogue about what really should happen. I have spoken with the various attorneys in town, including our law director, including the Southeast Ohio Legal Services Law Director and the Managing Director for the OU Student Legal Services. And all of them have agreed that having some kind of graduated scale would be a good idea. Now, I don't know exactly what's the best idea, and I think perhaps going back to having a task force for this would be possibly a good idea to really come up with what would be the best way to incentivize good landlords and perhaps rein in the ones that are bad actors. So I think this $50 fee is really unacceptable, and I just can't understand why the administration isn't eager to have more funds for our code enforcement office that needs it.
So you're talking about 29.03.10B, the inspection fee for additional inspections is now at $50?
Exactly. Well, it's now at $40. They're proposing $50.
Forty, and it proposed to increase to 50. Okay.
Do you have a suggestion on what it could be?
Well.
That would be an amendment, so.
Yeah, exactly. Well, as I said, if it was up to me, it would be a much longer conversation, and we don't have the time to get this done by immediately. But at the very least, I would like to see $62.15, because that has. Now, what the law director told me was that, based on legal cases and whatnot, it needs to be based on actual work done. So, and, okay, fine. So what does that cost, actually? And does that include, can we include the potential for overtime as part of that fee, given that if you can't get all of the inspections done in a year, and we're supposed to get them all done in a year, but we'd have to do overtime in order to get them all done in a year, then I think it's fair to include some overtime. But again, this is a longer conversation that I think we can really do. And I'm going to propose that we have either some task force or some other mechanism to look at this in more depth next year. But for right now, I'd like to see at least $65. this in more depth next year, but for right now, I'd like to see at least $65, $63 rounded up.
So am I hearing two potential amendments to this ordinance to be able to remove it from the table? The one would be to increase that fee that currently stands at 40, and rather than making it 50, to amend it to 65, and then the other one, the specialty vendor fee, to reduce that one from $100 per month to $25 per month. And those two, with those two items, we could bring this off the table and remove it from the table next week with those amendments. And then have a longer conversation on the task force for longer-term conversations.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Swank?
I have one more to add to that, and that's 5.03.04, and that's the after-hours turnoff. I don't know this for a fact, but I would wager that 95% of the time, that is an emergency situation where there has either been a pipe broke or something, and for the health and safety of the resident, they make the call for us to come out and turn the water off with that T-crank, so that they can then call the plumber to get things repaired. They're already in a desperate situation, and I've witnessed this personally over on the far east side, and by, I know it costs money, but it, it's almost, okay, you've got an emergency, and now we're going to charge you $50 more than we're currently charging you. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but it's, it's almost like adding insult to injury, where by no fault of your own, you're, you're calling the city to come out, stop the problem till you can get a plumber out to correct the problem.
I think this one, 5.03.04, the after-hours turnoff, is turning it off because of non, unpaid water bills. Is that...
Is it turn off or turn off?
Turn off.
Turn off, and it says, I'm reading, it says, added to water bills not paid on or before the due date, oh, wait a minute, additional 10%.
So why would we be going out after hours to turn off somebody's water who hasn't paid their bill?
Maybe it is, because it's off. Can we get that clarified?
Absolutely.
That hundred, and, and see if we can get that clarified in time for, clarified and potentially corrected, to see if we could have it ready for, as part of the amendments. So a point, point we'll take, and we'll figure that out and clarify it.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions for this particular, Rob, do you have a, a comment that you'd like to come up and make? Okay. Name, address, and if you're representing a group?
I'm Rob Delak, I live on Morris Avenue here in the city. I'm not representing anyone, anyone in particular, but I wanted to bring us back to the first thing we were talking about here, is the artisan fee or the specialty vendor fee. Member McCary mentioned he was looking for information in a city document, trying to find something that talks about our commitment to artists and vendors, and there isn't hardly anything there, there's really, there's, there's nothing written into our comprehensive plan that mentions artisans vending anywhere, anything like that. There's the love of art and culture, yes, but not promoting a culture where people can sell their wares and make a living as an artist in the city? We have nothing talking about that. I was really surprised to find that. The only thing I could find is in the City Sustainability Action Plan, to support local entrepreneurship by purchasing local products, incentivizing local startups to expand in Athens. And the public discussion about, the meeting they had talked about priority investing in the community members, buying local was a high priority, you know, but again, that's the only thing I can find. So I'm a little surprised that we, but if you look at what we've been doing to support artists vending in our street, we've just got $200 a, a month, or it was an annual fee of $1,200 or more, or something, I forget what it was, astronomical. There's, you, I think you all saw the numbers I tried to put together to at least get some idea if we were in the right ballpark, and we're not, not even close to the right ballpark for what we charge food vendors, let alone artist vendors. So we're astronomically too high, is one of the things, it's a barrier. So, and it's just the, one of the pieces of what the vendor has to do to do business here, so there's hundreds of dollars of fees for insurance and for other licensing, and then licensing with the state to be able to even vend too. So this is the last piece, and it should be a low hurdle. So that's just the piece I have. I threw out a number before, talked about annual versus monthly, reducing the bureaucracy, I think would be good, but I don't know if we need to argue that point, I think we need to come to something that, that makes a big step in the right direction. I'm not sure if $25 a month is it, is that number. So what I'd like to do is pass to someone else who's here, from the Artist Guild, Mike West, to talk about his perspective on this and what the guild has said, at least a number of the members of the guild have said to him about this, and give his perspective on this to follow on.
If he wants to speak, he may. You're more than welcome to come up, just give us your name and address, and, and you are representing a group, so...
Hi, I'm Mike West, I'm the president of the Athens Arts Guild, I live on Rockriffle Road outside the city of Athens. I talked to several of our members, and I asked how many would be interested in vending in the area, and there wasn't a real strong interest in it because of the cost. So, one of the, one of the, by the time that an artist pays their insurance for the year, they pay for the art market, at, at the Farmer's Market, they pay all these fees, they really, there's not much of an incentive to, to vend on the Court Street area, and it's a real shame, because probably, probably 90% of my business personally is outside of the city of Athens. We do Kettering, Yellow Springs, we do shows in Cincinnati, Columbus, Worthington, Upper Arlington, and we're, we've done over 250 shows total, and most of them's been outside the Athens area, so it'd be really nice to have an attraction inside Athens to draw people in, and to let our artists engage in some type of activity. I understand the cost of parking spaces, losing that revenue, I'm not really in favor of having spaces locked out for artists, I think there's, I think that if we formed some type of committee and got a dialogue going and started talking about it, there is some, someplace in the middle that, that would be reasonable. $25 a month ends up being, what, 300, 300 a year, if, if they've ended every week up there, which is kind of high for the space, because you're not really going to get that much customer activity, it's, it's going to be pretty minimal, it's going to be when the students are here, it's going to be nice weather, you're, you're kind of limiting that, so if we found out, if we developed a formula where it was reasonable based off those days, I thi, I think you would probably end up with a lot more artists participating in it.
Okay.
And then you've got vehicles, like you said, it's like, we couldn't do it, because we pull full-size truck, extended cab with a trailer, and take two booths, and, you know, we fill the entire area, it wouldn't be practical for us. Other artists that may, in the guild that may have jewelry, may have, you know, something that they could set up on a single table, that would work. So I, I think it would be worth exploring the options a little further. I, I just feel that 25 is probably going to be a little bit strong per month.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. Councilmember McCary, then Mayor Patterson?
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to a point that Councilmember Spielmanis made about the law director reminding us that whatever rate we set for the reinspection of rental units be consistent with the amount of work that's required, and I was just going to ask that we come back with that information to understand if, based on compensation for employees or other factors, the $65 is on target.
Mayor Patterson?
I will share with all of you, I'm glad we ping-ponged back to the rental permit fee and reinspection or inspection fee. Director Stone did go through and crunch the numbers and, and looking at things, currently what is, had been recommended is $150, this is for rental permit fee, $150 for a three-bedroom or less, 775 for four bedrooms or more, and it would be to change that to where just, regardless of the number of bedrooms, all would be $175, and in looking at that, that would bring in enough revenue to hire a fifth code enforcement officer, more importantly, it would allow us, and this would be a staffing ordinance change, but for the code office to have a, an assistant director, who, among other duties, the responsibility is still to go out and inspect units, the rental units in the city of Athens, so it would bring us up to a total of five code enforcement officers. It would also set us up to where in the future, to have a, basically a building department is part of the code office. Currently, all permits for, for new buildings in the city of Athens end up going up to the State House, or not the State House, goes up to Columbus for approval, and then comes back down to Athens. There's other communities out there that their cities have a building inspector and a building office that is, you know, associated, can be associated with code. There are others to where it is a joint county slash city function, to where they work together. I think this also opens us up in the future to have, potentially offering that service throughout the county, to where these building permits, which on average is about $750, that's money that's going up to Columbus and not staying here local, it would certainly be great to have that, that level of building permits stay local, but again, the, in reevaluating this, the recommendation would be, again, to go and look at the rental permits, which again is listed in your, what you have in front of you, it's section 29 dash, or 29.03.08 rental permit fees, and striking the 150 for three bedrooms or less, and just have all permits being $175, regardless of the number of bedrooms.
That sounds good, but what about the reinspection fees?
Well, we, we can continue to explore that, too, you know, but again, at what point, or, in terms of someone doing the work, are you going beyond what it costs to do? But we can explore both of these. I'm just throwing out to council to consider the 175 for all rental permits, regardless of the number of bedrooms, as we are issuing them under that particular section, and allowing us to be able to hire a fifth code enforcement officer. We're going to need it.
So if council is agreeable to that, then that would be under 29.03.08, it would be removing the 150 for three bedrooms, and then making it 175, period. No distinctions on that?
Correct.
And if you can confirm that 29.03.10B, the inspection fee for additional inspections, if the $65 will be sufficient, I think we could come back next week, then. Councilmember Spielmanis?
I'm going to emphasize, and thank you, Member McCary, for, for bringing it up again, but if we could, again, crunch the numbers to say, how much does it really cost, considering how many rentals there are, and the number of rentals we're going to have, especially with the Kershaw Green, be adding 191 new units and more, so how many is it, how, how much is it going to cost to do that in a reasonable amount of time? And again, I, I want to bring it up, but I think we are safe legally and in every other way, if we can make sure that we're representing how much it actually costs to do the work.
Would you include travel time?
We should, if that's, if that's legal, if that works, yeah.
Sure does.
Yeah.
So do I sense we have closure for bringing this back then, next week, then? Yes, councilmember Grace?
Just to quickly go back to the after-hours, looking back at our, our code that was last amended, under ordinance 11522, section 5.03.04 was after-hours turn on, so, rather than turn off. So I'm, I'm thinking that this change in, that's proposed is for turning water back on after hours if it has been shut off for non-payment, not the emergency turn on.
So we can get that clarified, too, which would address your question? Yeah, okay, great. Mayor Patterson?
Just really quick, Councilmember Swank, I certainly appreciate your comment about this to begin with, because I agree with you, you know, why in the world would you turn someone's water off in the middle of the night? Why would we send a crew in to go, you know what, we're just going to go ahead and turn your water off? Or, or for leak, like you had mentioned, that, that's just under our emergency services to where i, if we know that someone has, there's a problem, whether it's on our side or on their side, that clearly there's a problem, but our, our crews go in, they'll, they'll shut the valve off, but no, I'm glad you just clarified it, because I was really stunned, I'm going, why would we do that? But it's, it is to turn it on, so if someone comes home after being away for a long time and hadn't paid their water bill, you haven't paid your water bill.
No, no, understood, so just to tie it up.
Okay, okay. Thank you all, thanks for the comments. Mr. West, we'll keep you in mind for this long-range discussion on specialty fees, and thank you, I appreciate you taking the time. All right. I think that we are ready to adjourn at 9:02 PM. Thank you all very much.